And we're good to go? Okay, everyone. It is 7:30 on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Warren Township High School District 121 School Board Meeting. As we start every meeting, if you could all stand up and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. First up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes?
I do not.
If not, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Anderson. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up are recognitions, and it's great to see that we've got lots of students to recognize.
Take it away, he says. Okay, here we go. If all of our students that are being recognized in our National Merit Program, if you guys could come forward and...
Come on, come on up. Come on.
Alphabetically by height.
We know you're smart, so go alphabetically.
Now line up alphabetically by number. No. I'm gonna read some nice things about each of you, okay? And then Mrs. Bertola's gonna try and guess who you are. It's all organized. Okay. Thank you for some time to be here to recognize 24 outstanding students. I know we have busy schedules and all of our students couldn't be here tonight, but thank you to those that took the time to be here to recognize these wonderful students. So the National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition which began in 1955 for recognition and scholarships. Each year they recognize about 50,000 of the students that took the qualifying exam. High school students enter the National Merit Program by taking the preliminary SAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. These scholarships are considered to be important and a prestigious award. Even students who qualify and don't win can earn honor and recognition and are able to use that to their benefit when it comes to applying to college. National Merit Scholars are heavily recruited by universities and some are even given preferential treatment in admissions, housing, and course selection. Many selective universities seek to increase their number of National Merit Scholars. They also, they also receive national, excuse me, they also receive attractive merit scholarships. We would like to recognize students in four distinct categories this evening. They are National Recognition Program Scholars, National Merit Commended Students, National Merit Semi-finalists, and National Merit Finalists. So first, the National Recognition Program Scholar provides recognition for outstanding high school students who identify in one or more of the following areas: Black, African-American, Hispanic-American or Latinx, Indigenous, or attend in a rural area or a small town, which is not us. Each year, the National Recognition Program Scholar identifies students from the United States and U.S. Territories who take the PSAT, NMSQT, and score in the top 2.5% of test takers who identify in the stated categories. And Warren is proud to recognize 13 students this year. My wires might have gotten crossed a little bit, but I have students that said they were gonna be here and not gonna be here, so I'm gonna just call out the students that said they couldn't be here but still recognize them. Mrs. Bertola has a certificate for you. If for some reason you're here and I call your name, just give a wave and it's okay that you're here. We won't kick you out. So first, Olu Awasusi, Jonathan Igwu, Oliver Flores, Tatiana Hinajosa, Rachel Osusasan, and Olivia Suarez. Okay? So I think here present tonight, we have Kayla Cameron. She had one job. Congratulations, Kayla. Monica Cleora. The Nortega. Jasmine Porter, who I don't think's here, but Mom wanted to be here, so Mom's coming forward for Jasmine. David Rodriguez. Ryan Vargas. And Andrea Zapata-Tamas. Okay, congratulations to those students. Okay, students who scored in the approximate top 3% of all test takers in the nation are recognized as commended students in the National Merit Program out of the approximately 1.5 million test takers. These students do not continue in the scholarship competition, but they are recognized as a part of the top 34,000 students that took the exam because of their outstanding academic promise. Warren recognizes 10 students this year. Okay, kinda same format. A few that I don't think could be here tonight, but we would like to recognize. A.J. Ragunathan. Nathan Shi. And Drew Stacy. All right, you ready, Mrs. Bertola? Okay, here we go. Emma Beard. Eleanor Hanner. Eleanor Kramer. Emma Coons. And Scarlett Rzdzowski. And then we have two students who are also recognized. Jasmine Porter, so Mom gets to come back up. And Ryan Vargas was also nominated as a commended student. And Ryan. Ryan is also a double recipient. Okay, so approximately 1.5 million students took the PSAT, NMSQT qualifying exam, and the National Merit Semi-finalists make up 16,000 students that achieve this recognition by scoring in the top 1% in the nation. Warren is proud to recognize three students who have achieved this honor. Unable to make it tonight, John A.V. Coley. And then here tonight, Joseph Mo. And Ranveer Singh. Okay, and then finally, our semifinalists, those three, all move on in the competition to become National Merit Finalists, and they make up about 15,000 students that achieve this recognition, again, by scoring in the top 1% in the nation. About 7,500 of those students will receive some type of National Merit Scholarship. Warren is proud to recognize the semifinalists who have moved on to become finalists this year, and of course, all three of our semifinalists moved on. So congratulations, John A.V., congratulations, Joseph, and Ranveer, for moving on to be finalists. So how about a round of applause for all of our National Merit... So the last thing that I like to do to just have a little fun, I know decision days coming, it's about a week away, you guys are getting close, just to give kind of the audience and our board an idea of your future aspirations, where you might be attending. It's not committing, committing to it tonight if you're still deciding, still doing some college visits, but if we could start over, I don't know who's over on the far end over there. There we go. Could, would you just introduce yourself again and just maybe where you're planning to attend a school or schools that you're thinking about, and maybe future aspirations of what you're thinking about majoring in?
Hi, I'm Kayla Cameron, and I'm going to University of Michigan.
Hi, I'm Ellie. I'm deciding between Ohio...
Hi, I'm Monica Cleora. I'm deciding between University of Michigan.
My name is Emma Coons. I'll be attending U of I as a...
Hi, I'm Ryan Vargas. I'm planning to go to...
Hi, I'm Ranveer Singh. I'm gonna be attending Princeton University of Michigan.
My name is Joseph, and I'm on this line.
Hi, I'm Scarlett Rzdzowski. I'm planning to go to...
Hi, I'm Emma, and I'll be going to University of Michigan, and I'm majoring in...
I'm Ellie. I'm going to California, California University of Michigan.
Thank you again to all of our National Merit Finalists or commended students and those in the program recognition. Congratulations to each of you. I know it's an exciting time for our seniors with just a few weeks left, but enjoy those last few weeks and all your AP tests. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, families, also for coming and showing your support. So we do our, anytime we have National Letter of Intent Signing Days, we have a quick video that we show to celebrate, so I'm gonna throw that up on the screen here while people are walking out.
He's coming over for a room.
North Central. Another Parkside, it's two Parksides. Your favorite school? University of Wisconsin, Parkside, in Kenosha. Safety cone on your video.
Back to reality now. Next up is a time for a public comment. Nobody has signed up on the sign-in sheet, but that does not preclude anyone from addressing the board if they'd like to. The podium is all yours. You've got three minutes. You can address the board on any topic that you choose. Let's just move forward to committee reports. Any questions or comments, anything on the committee reports? Not let's move forward to the superintendent's report.
Don't, I don't think I have anything to add to what's included in the written report.
Board members have any questions? Bring us on to the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes personnel recommendations per Exhibit A, numbers 99 through 104, as posted, and Exhibit B, numbers B250 through B255, as posted, 2024 summer workers for the Maintenance and Educational Technology Department, as presented, the pay rates for substitute teachers and substitute teachers covering leaves for the 24-25 school year, as presented, the occupational therapy service provider agreement with Denny Physical Therapy, PC, for the 2024-25 school year, the payment of bills dated April 23rd, 2024, in the amount of $6,313,797.71. Beginning the annual audit and the audit engagement letters with Baker Tilly U.S. LLP for fiscal year '24, and the regular meeting minutes of April 9, 2024.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thanks very much. Now up to our discussion item for the night, the long-term financial projections.
Yeah, I'm gonna invite Rob up. I think everybody met Rob, come on up.
Absolutely.
I came here just for this presentation.
We get that a lot, though. People leave.
They're smart.
Yeah, we tried to get out of it. Didn't work. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Rob Grossi from Luminate Consulting, and I've had the opportunity to work with a bunch of school districts in Illinois. I've been working with school districts and school boards for well over 30 years, and what you, what you received here, the, the report, this is a report based on what I kind of feel is good information for boards of education to have access to and for administrators. So I think it's, it, use it as a good, it's a resource tool, kinda shows about your socioeconomics, about your largest taxpayers, about your tax collections, your financial history, several pieces of information I think that are very relevant. And what I'm gonna do tonight is I'm gonna focus on the financial projections. So another thing that we do, which I think is a good best practices, is the financial projections are prepared in three ways. So a lot of school districts will prepare financial projections under a worst-case scenario lens and different types of lenses. What I'm gonna present tonight is the most realistic scenarios. This is what I believe 50% probability would be better, 50% probability would be worse. Obviously, things happen, and that's why I recommend an independent analysis annually of the district's financial condition. Within the report, I also include, which I'm not gonna talk about tonight, a realistic worst-case scenario and a realistic best-case scenario. So not the, not the worst-case scenario like the state's gonna shift pension costs next year, that may happen financially, you know, who knows what's gonna happen down the road, but it's, but it's a realistic worst-case scenario. That's more like 75%, 25% under the worst-case scenario and a realistic best-case scenario. So I think it gives a good, a broad spectrum of what I think is gonna happen with the district. Obviously, your district has had kind of a roller coaster financial situation. You've had some very strong challenges, and with the successful passage of the referendum, you have some, what I, what I will conclude as some significant opportunities to invest in your students and invest in your facilities. So we could start the presentation. Do you want me to... So I'm, I'm gonna start with a, just a brief summary of the district's historical financial situation. So this is the district's excluding major capital expenditures. These are your revenues and expenditures since 2017, and you could see that your revenues really, you know, 2023 is the first year you really received the first piece of your referendum dollars, so that's where you see the big jump. Thank you. So when you, when you put that together, you, you could see that over this time period, on average, your revenues have grown 4.5%. On the expenditure side, you could see, as, as you know, the district has consciously, as it was going into the referendum, focused on keeping expenditures low, and you could see that 2023 expenditures were actually lower than they were in 2022. And in fact, since 2017, your expenditures grew at less than 1%, 1/2 of 1%. So that's a very low rate, one of, one of the lowest of any of the school districts I worked with, the lowest probably, of any of the school districts I worked with. So you could see that the district, between the successful passage of the referendum and spending with uncertainty on how your revenues were gonna be, the district has put itself in a decent spot. If you put the revenues and expenditures together, you could see that the district deficit spent from 2017 to 2020, which means your revenues were, excuse me, your expenditures were greater than your revenues, and in total by about $14 million. But then from, then once the district enacted some expenditure reductions, revenues started to trickle up, the district has incurred surpluses over the last three years. COVID helped as well. That, COVID is good financially. It wasn't good for anything, but financially, it was good for school districts. So from 2001 to 2021 to 2023, your total revenues exceeded your total expenditures by $24 million. Major capital expenditures between 2017 and '23, District 121 invested a little over $10.5 million in major capital projects, and those were funded with bond proceeds in 2019. The district received about $25 million. That's very low. I mean, I mean, over that time period, the district, as I'm sure you know, has not invested a lot in its facilities, but you were in a tough financial situation, so that, that makes sense. But my assumption is that there's a lot of projects that were on hold that are forthcoming. In terms of fund balances, this, this is a graph of fund balances since 2017. The yellow represents unreserved fund balances, and the blue represents capital reserves. As I mentioned before, the district borrowed $25 million in, in 2019. There's still a lot of unspent dollars of those bond proceeds that need to be spent. And the district's fund balance policy is 40% of expenditures, so until, if, until this year, the district was below its fund balance policy, which it knew, and that's why it went for referendum, that's why, that's the value of fund balance policies, is to get ahead of the game. So, so the district ended 2023 with roughly 6.8 months' worth of fund balance reserves and with, you know, some money left over from the bond proceeds. To put your fund balance policy in perspective, the State Board of Education recommends six months' worth of reserves, which would be 50%, in order to get the highest profile score on their, their financial rubric. So the, the district... So the district may be in a position, if it desires, because I think fund balances are going to grow, to bring that up to six months and try to maintain that level. That's something that you might want to consider. Financial forecast, little over seventy-three percent of your money comes from real estate taxes. So essentially, and real estate taxes grow at the rate of inflation. So your revenues are tied to inflation. Your other sources of revenues, other local revenues, evidence-based funding, state grants, federal grants, there's very little growth in those revenue sources. So essentially, your district's revenues grow at about seventy-three percent of inflation. So in terms of the major assumptions on the revenues, for the levy that the board's approving in December of two thousand twenty-four, the CPI is already known, that's going to be three point four percent. For the twenty-five levy, right now, we're projecting three percent. It's trending a little higher than that right now, but a lot of economists think that's going to come down. And then after that, we're projecting CPI to grow at two point three percent thereafter. And you'll see in the report, one of the main levers between the best case and worst-case scenarios is what inflation's going to be down the road. Corporate personal property taxes in the entire state of Illinois, every school district, over the last couple of years, was overpaid. The state made a calculation error, recognized the error, and all school districts are down about twenty-nine percent this year. So your district's corporate personal property taxes are going to be down about seven hundred sixty thousand dollars versus last year. And I did talk to the Illinois Department of Revenue, and as of now, they're anticipating it to be about the same as it was, flat going forward. But if the economy slows down in Illinois, that certainly could change. Interest earnings, which fluctuate with market conditions, are projected to begin to decline. So interest earning, the interest rates are going to be in decline, but fund balance reserves going up will generate more revenue. So they kind of offset. Evidence-based funding, so with the passage of the referendum, the district's growth in evidence-based funding will shrink. The district, starting next year, evidence-based funding will factor in the fact that you passed a successful referendum. You were getting four hundred thousand dollars about on average. Right now, the projection is two hundred thousand. It all depends on how you fall relative to all the school districts in Illinois. It's a complex formula. So we'll keep a close eye on that, but certainly, the growth in evidence-based funding is going to be lower than it was historically. And then state and federal grants are projected to be generally flat. So putting that all in the blender, we're projecting revenues to grow three percent during the projection period. On the expenditure side, roughly sixty-two percent of your expenditures are salaries and employee benefits. That's very common for school districts. It's a service entity. That percentage is right in line with other districts in Illinois. And the district has settled a contract, so you have a pretty good idea on what your major revenue growth is going to be. Just pointing out a couple, I guess, the one big thing that sticks out to me is out-of-district tuition is eleven percent of your budget. That's very high. That's very high relative to other districts. I work with other high school districts in Lake County, and that's a significantly higher percentage. So that's something that the district might want to look into. And those are students that are receiving services outside of your buildings.
Could I ask a question?
Of course, anytime.
The benefits, is that in line with other districts you work with?
Yeah, in aggregate, yeah, I would say ten to twelve percent. I mean, that's probably right in line with that. I mean, a lot of it's predicated on how many people take the benefits and things of that sort. There's another way to look at it, but in terms of the percentage of the budget, that's in line. On the expenditure side, putting your contract, your collective bargaining agreements, and you have obviously employees that are non-contractual, we're projecting an average increase on a per-employee basis of five and a half percent during the projection period. Staff size increased in two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, as we know. We're projecting an additional four full-time equivalent employees next year and then flat thereafter. The district will generate about one point three million dollars in savings from teacher retirements. I worked with Chris on developing these assumptions, and she gave me the list of the teachers retiring, and there's the savings generated when teachers retire. In aggregate, it's projected to be about one point three million dollars. That'll help offset other salary increases. Health insurance premiums for almost all school districts are going up significantly. A lot of it has to do with the fact that elective surgeries were postponed during COVID, and a lot of those, you know, there's a lot of catch-up on that. Inflation obviously comes into play as well. So we're projecting employee benefits increased nineteen percent this year. That's because there's more bodies that are receiving employee benefits. You've hired more staff. And six point seven percent in twenty-five, because you're hiring another four in the projections, and six percent annually thereafter. Out-of-district special educations projected to continue to rise, but then a rise at a slower pace down the road. One thing is, an important part of the projections is, embedded in these numbers, is the district spending twenty-four million in major capital projects during the projection period. And then we'll talk about if the district wants to, you know, invest more than that during the projection period, what that would look like.
Can I ask you two questions?
Of course.
Second bullet point, insurance costs going up six point seven and six percent annually. Is that realistic? I mean, historically, going into that, it's been a lot higher than that.
Are you saying realistically, you think it's higher or you think it's low?
Oh, based on historical trends.
So health insurance is like eight to ten percent. But there's other benefits like FICA, Medicare, TRS, that blend together.
Okay.
So, yes, so the health insurance component of that is going up closer, is averaged, projected close to ten percent.
Okay, thank you. And then out-of-district special education, it's increasing by a million dollars in fiscal year twenty-five?
That's what we're looking at right now.
Okay, just wanted to verify that.
When you say increased services, is that serving more students? Do you know?
That would be that, yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's primarily that, the cost of, you know, the cost of specialty co-ops or services go up as well, but increases that the district has experienced would likely indicate more students being serviced outside the district. So if you put the revenue and expense projections together, you could see the black circles represent what's happened in the past, that you saw previously. And we're projecting surpluses, fairly healthy surpluses, for this current fiscal year and then the next five fiscal years. You could see that the annual surplus is projected to decrease. That's because our expenditures are projected to grow faster than our revenues. And we kind of knew that, first of all, the district is bringing more stuff into the school to help, you know, that had been cut out in the past, using this as an opportunity to increase student learning opportunities and then, you know, contracts in place that are projected to be higher than inflation. But with that being said, again, the district is projected to continue to have strong surpluses throughout the projection period.
Probably those annual surpluses?
Those are annual surpluses, yes.
They build on each other.
Yes, exactly. So you'll see, I get into that, is exactly right. So this is how it impacts, to your point, this is exactly, this is how it impacts your fund balances as it grows upon each other. So we have the non-capital revenues versus expenditures, and you could see there's fairly significant surpluses, revenues over expenditures. You could see that we have embedded the twenty-four million dollars after this year of capital, four million dollars a year, we just spread it out. And then ending fund balances, you could see that even though you're investing four million dollars of non-borrowed funds into your facilities, your fund balances will continue to grow. And this is what we're projecting fund balances to do. So again, if you recall, the low point was like two point eight months a couple of years ago. The district is projected to have healthy fund balances going forward, which will give you some opportunities to do some things that you might want to do.
Lehman's question?
Of course.
What percentage or what's the relationship of non-capital surpluses with fund balances? Is that part of, is one part of the other?
So basically, the non-capital revenue surplus is kind of viewed that as like how your operations are. Are you spending more than, are you spending more money to operate your school district versus the money you're bringing in? So, for example, in two thousand twenty-four, we're projecting that you're going to bring in for operations about nine million dollars more than you spend for annual reoccurring type of expenditures. And then in addition to that and separate from that, the district is using four million dollars to invest into its facilities.
Get down to?
Right, which?
Five.
Which would knock this down.
Exactly.
Which it does.
Right, and you bring up an important point, is that if you look at two thousand twenty-nine, you can see that the non-capital surplus is about three point eight million. And if you spend four million, so in all the years before two thousand twenty-nine, you're actually paying for your capital projects with your surpluses. That would be the first year that your capital projects are above your projected surplus. So that's when you start dipping into your fund balances, and you could see the fund balances, that's the first year that fund balances start to decline slightly. But again, at a significant level.
Okay, I don't know if this is a good slide to ask this question, if you don't mind.
Of course.
So those of us that had a lot of discussions regarding the referendum, and I know you don't have a crystal ball, but when the public asked, you know, how far would this referendum get us without having to go back and ask for another referendum? And I'm looking at the months of reserves and then the ending fund balances, and then we start dipping, like you were talking about, two thousand twenty-nine. Now we're spending a little bit more than what we're, non-capital revenues are. We might dip into the fund balance. Off the top of your head, no, you know, I'm not holding you to anything, but I mean, is there any way to predict how far we could look a little bit further to see, like, is that an accurate projection?
So I would say, this is the way, you asked, that's a great question. And this is the way I would answer that question, is that, all right, so we know that we're going to be growing operations in the district, right? I mean, there's things, you brought a significant amount of staff back into the schools, some programming things, and we also know that you have to invest some money into the facilities. Okay, so this is like the honeymoon phase that you're getting all the money in.
Assumed on this slide.
Which is assumed on this slide. The next couple of years, you're going to be spending some money to kind of get to right-size the district to where you feel the community deserves this district to be in terms of operations. After that point in time, then I always tell school districts to look at it this way. Mathematically, if you could keep your expenditure growth rate at or below your revenue growth rate, you'll never run out of money. So in other words, if revenues grow three percent and you could keep expenditures grow three percent in perpetuity, you'll never run out of money. Mathematically, you won't. The only way your money starts to drop is when your expenditures grow at a faster rate than your revenues.
Is that a practical?
Well, well.
Because I don't know school districts that don't go out for a referendum.
So that's a great question.
Right?
So is it practical? Right now, you know, in the current climate that we're in, the last couple of years, the labor market is, you know, we know there's an incredible labor shortage, and schools are poaching other schools, which never happened, other staff and everything like that. So school districts have been forced to give significant increases in order to attract and retain quality teachers. So that's a dynamic that exists that all school districts are facing. And all school districts are giving, you know, historically high increases, as your district did. I don't know what the market's going to be. Certainly, it's going to be driven by inflation. I mean, inflation, a few years ago, inflation was less than one percent. I mean, inflation's high right now. If inflation's less than one percent and your revenues grow at one percent, it's hard to keep expenditures at that level.
With healthcare and stuff like?
With healthcare things and things that you can't control.
And I think that's where we lost ground before, too.
That could be.
So, yeah.
So that's.
You're not going to keep your expenses at one percent.
Right.
Now without hacking staff.
Right, that's exactly right. So the two things that you, the two things that I would be looking at as the levers, I'm kind of getting ahead of myself, as the levers to try to maintain expenditure growth rates low, if possible, without impacting student learning, is I would be closely watching your enrollment, because your enrollment's dropped by four hundred since two thousand seventeen. So I would be looking at that. If your enrollment declines, then you could, then perhaps, adjustments can be made without impacting student learning. And then, and the other thing I would take a close look at is out-of-district special education. You know, what's, and again, I don't know what's going on there, but the nice thing about an analysis like this, just like when you get a health screening or something like that, is it shows a number, you go, okay, what's going on here? So it's good to take a look at that.
So having said all that.
So if you.
If we're practical with what we're doing, and again, I think like we saw those one percent years, right?
Yes.
You can't control all the variables. I get that, but we're not looking at another referendum in seven years, right?
No.
I mean, we're looking at.
Well, you look at this.
I get it, I'm saying like, how far are we at least?
So if we.
Where we thought we would be?
If you look at this, in two thousand twenty-nine, we're still running an operating deficit, a surplus, excuse me, revenues over expenditures. You have eighty-four million dollars in the bank. That's going to last you a long time, even if, you know.
I want to know.
Right, so, and again, the gap between expenditure growth and revenue growth would dictate the length, but I would be surprised, it's got to be, you know, not to hold you, but I mean.
I won't hold you.
I would say that you should be able to grow at least fifteen, twenty years without having to go referendum again. But again, crazy things could happen.
Sure.
And that's why you do, that's why you do projections every year. So if the state comes in and says, I mean, right before COVID, the state was getting ready to cut funding to education significantly, and then they got a ton of COVID relief, and they were able to pay off their seven billion dollars with unpaid bills, it helped them a lot. But now they're talking about a fiscal cliff. If they start shifting pension costs, I mean, things could come up that could alter that. But if you could control your destiny, your district should be good for well over a decade and beyond.
I appreciate your answer.
And adjust every time, every year. I mean, you're projecting way in advance.
We look, every year, something new's going to happen.
You modify this every year.
It's exactly right. I mean, the projections that I was doing for school districts two or three months ago had inflation for this coming tax levy at, three point four is locked in. The following tax levy, we're using three percent. Back at that point in time, it was like two point six. Now inflation's coming in hotter, so far year-to-date than people were expecting. Now all of a sudden, the number goes up a little bit. So next year at this time, we'll know what that number's going to be. We'll know how this year finished, because you've done a lot this year, and we'll know going forward, right?
I get that. I just appreciate it. It's just something I wanted to get my head wrapped around and make sure we're kind of still in our promised land.
I mean, think about it, another way to look at it is, okay, three point six billion dollar surplus. So let's just say that starts to shrink. So in two thousand thirty, two thousand thirty-one, you have balanced budgets, okay? Then you start deficit spending. If you deficit spend two million dollars a year, that's like thirty years, if that's the case. Again, I'm not, who knows what's going to happen, but the district could control a significant aspect of this, and I would say that.
We're in good shape to do it.
We're in good shape. Danny will be retired by the time the next referendum happens.
So will I.
He'll be retired.
Tell them we've got twenty-five years.
Yeah, right, right.
Could you talk to us a little bit about the logic of reserves? Like, I understand six months sounds like maybe is sort of a best practice minimum to maintain.
Sure. So your district, your district has, on the lower end of it, probably the fortieth percentile-ish, you know, which is coincidentally a forty percent number, of fund balance reserves. The thing about fund balance reserves, there's a couple of things. During the fiscal year, money goes in and out. So you collect your real estate taxes twice a year. So right before your real estate taxes are coming in, your fund balances drop low. Then you get a lot of money, your fund balances go high. So the first thing is you want to make sure at all points during the year, you have enough cash on hand to pay teacher salaries, administrative salaries, pay the bills. So that's the first purpose. The second purpose is, is if something unforeseen happens, like the state does something to you or something like that, then, and I'm not predicting that, because I'm not a boy that cries wolf kind of person anymore, then you have time to do what. Then you have time to do what you need to do, so so because. You're because you went when you went below your fund balance reserve, it triggered a response by the board to reduce expenditures. That gave you the time to successfully pass the referendum. If the referendum didn't pass, it may have given you another chance to pass the referendum before you had to cut into operations to the point. Where you were decreasing what you were providing your kids and impacting their probability of succeeding in life. So so you so it it's 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 the same logic on why you have a reserve. And you're personally why you want to maintain um extra money in the bank. If you have a health problem that was unforeseen, da 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 da, you want to make sure that you could address those types of scenarios. So that's that's the value of fund balance reserves.
Yeah, okay, alright.
So again, we have um fund balances, ending the projection year at just under ten months worth of reserves. And the district again is like four point eight months is the is the minimum fund balance target. Uh, observations, the recommendations, uh, the successful passage of the referendum will greatly improve the district's financial condition. This will provide significant opportunity to increase investment in student learning and facility improvement. Uh, the district appears to have a significant amount of unused bond proceeds that must be spent on capital projects, so I just want, pardon me?
That's why we got him.
So so in two thousand nineteen, the district issued about twenty five million dollars. And. Those funds should have been spent already. But there there's still well over ten million dollars of unspent bond proceeds, those are built into your total fund balance. So so.
This is new to me. Why, John?
So we borrowed another, we borrowed a bond in because we can carry X amount of debt, we refinance all of our debt. We did that, we netted twenty five million dollars, but we did it saying we're going to use that money for capital projects. So now it is for that, you can't just start throwing that into other things. I mean, you could, but.
When you say it should be spent because we promised to spend it at that time.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and then when we go down the road X amount of years, we can do that again.
Right.
Right?
So yeah, so so that's you 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 said exactly right, so that that when I did that initial fund balance, that top number, which is unused cap. That is that has to be spent on capital. You the district borrowed that money tax exempt. Um, and as a requirement, it has to be used for capital and the money should have been spent already. So it's so so spending that sooner as soon as possible is a strong recommendation.
Important to note, though, um, I mean, typically when you go after bonds, you you have something that you're going to spend it on, so. But covid did happen, um, not even a year after that, which then shut everything down. So I just want to kind of like publicly state the fact that, you know, that was three years and then we had our financial issues then at play and. So there were like two pieces that may have delayed the spending of that money. You're not wrong, I mean, when you bond, you're supposed to, you took it for a reason, you need to spend it, but I think that delay of our financial cliff and covid just kind of pushed it. We now have a, as you know from working with Chris, a facility. Plan, which I think that money, I I believe that money is accounted for and spending somewhere in that. Maybe we need to accelerate that based on the recommendation of like, let's just get it done just to get it off our books, but. I just wanted to point that out.
Right, and and and.
If I'm wrong, tell me.
No, and 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 other districts have experienced that as well.
Okay.
Uh, is that is that covid changed a lot of things?
Yeah.
And and it certainly became challenging to 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 make a decision on.
Right.
Doing something with the money, not knowing exactly whether the referendum was going to pass or not.
Yeah.
So 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 I agree with everything you say and 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 now that that's passed, you know, I think that.
Now it's time to.
Now it's time to spend the money.
Hundred percent.
Uh, the other observation, final observation is that's as I mentioned before, uh, revenue growth projected at three percent. Expenditure growth five point eight, it's five point one if you if you take away the capital projects. Uh, but but with that number being higher, which we knew it would be higher, that's why those surpluses are shrinking a little bit.
Rob, real quick, I think you jumped over that third bullet point, you have talked about tuition costs, but.
Right, so that so um, as as I mentioned, uh, that the district does send spend a significant percentage of its expenditure budget on out of district tuition versus other districts.
Do you have a average expenditure on districts?
I I I I work with. I I I see more like four or five percent.
Okay.
Your percentage is significantly higher.
We identified this.
I know.
Years ago, which is part of the reason for the special ed. A district our size, if I had to guess, just based on experience, we'd be out placing around fifty students ish. Um, anywhere between forty to sixty, basically half. So there were a couple of people that I think identified this, which is why the special ed audit was done, but there's also. Other things at play now that it it make it even more sense to bring back kids. One, it's always better to have kids in their homeschool in their community and um, just, you know, right out of the gate, I wanted to mention that. But two, seed all. Is very rough waters right now and they're barely accepting the students that we think we we have allocation for. Um, and just there's a shortage of therapy today schools, you know, public and private that are just, there's nowhere to place kids too. Which I think, but I I believe all of this, it's nice to have the external validation of. Something I think we some of us picked up on, but I think we already have a plan to try to bring, we have more space in the schools. Again, it's better to have kids in their homeschool. The challenge will be as time goes on, staffing. So we all know it needs to be done, but now we're going into a labor shortage of, there was already a shortage of special ed teachers to begin with. I think that will be our next challenge is how do we find staff? We have space, we know we need to do it, how do we find the people?
Help me to understand it, is that in, okay, let me rephrase it. Certain number of students need special ed. You you're not going to change that, it would seem to me. Now, you're talking about cutting down expenditures for spec- special ed that are external, which would mean to me that you want to bring it internal. Which would also mean you need increased resources and staff to do that. Is that in here?
So so the assumption is that the district is going to continue to outsource, outplace students at um.
Here is we're going to continue to do that.
Correct.
Okay.
His recommendation is to.
Yeah, I got it.
Bring it down.
Well, it it's it's more to examine it because because I don't know the students and I don't know this, but but I would say this in general. If your district, I mean, your district enrollment is going down, so my assumption is that um, there's probably space in the in the in the buildings if necessary. It's it's worth an examination of and a cost analysis, it doesn't make, does it make sense first and foremost for the student? Um, which, you know, that that's supposed to be the desired way they that education is provided. But it's not always possible. Plus, there's a labor shortage too that you have to deal with in that respect as well. There's a big shortage of special education teachers as well.
Time you outplace is typically way, way more expensive and transportation, it is.
The the, no, the the um. I I think school districts generally believe. That there's savings if they bring students that don't have high needs back into the classroom.
I was just gonna say, I think it probably depends on their needs too, like if they're ultra specialized, that would be a hard thing to do for one person maybe, but.
Right.
You gotta like probably find a good fit.
And again, it's a it's a it's a sensitive, it's a sensitive issue, but but. Perhaps there's a win win situation where it's good for the student to be back in the school and it will save the district money. Perhaps, I have no idea other than the fact that the numbers bear out worth examining that issue.
You have external validation, I have a little bit experience, these numbers are high. Is there something in the water in the greater Gurnee area that causes? No, it's we likely, if I were to guess, I don't work here, just community representation. We probably at some point didn't have the staff to be able to attend to the kids' needs for whatever reason. And we've then outplaced the kids to places that do have the staff. Seed all's seed all's supposed to fill that need, but they're having trouble staffing and, you know, and that's where the. Kind of the. So when we have like uh incidents of a certain eligibility, you know, and maybe the district down the street has one or two and we have one or two, you know, that. That's the whole purpose of a seed all, but they've been struggling right now.
Goes away, we have no choice.
Well, it's not going to go away, but I will tell you from going to the quarterly meetings, because I'm your rep there, I will tell you they there are districts that continue to pull out. And the last meeting that happened, which was, I think last month, actually. There there was the announcement of yet another district that is intending to pull out a seed all. And what's happening is people are either unhappy with the allocation that they're given to place kids there or have found it to be cheaper to create their own co ops. Um, like Stevenson and and a couple others is a good example when like four or five of them pulled and created their own. You know, that's what's now happening is one or onesie twosies are now kind of pulling and trying to recreate. Yeah, and which I don't understand, something. It's been very rocky over at seed all, it's not a secret, go to the board meetings, there's been a lot of unrest, so I I'm not sure exactly what's going on, but. The the ideal of what we thought is going on just isn't the case right now, like uh, and they're having trouble staffing as well, by the way.
So we should be investigating, maybe cooperating with other people, make our own?
I think there's. So we have this audit, we have a a plan that they'll eventually roll, something may come of that where they start saying, if I had to guess. And I apologize for speaking here and might be out of turn, but if you start to bring in certain programs and you're like, okay. We can create a classroom with this many needs, by the way, Grays Lake happens to have one or two kids that might be a great fit and there's no room over at. Seed all and they were sending them halfway across the country where the kids. Could only sometimes see their parents because that's the only place where there was a school that worked with, you know. There might be a case of we charge tuition to Grays Lake to serve one or two kids.
Vice versa.
Which is a model. It doesn't have to be you leave seed all, it just means you might see districts starting to now work together to fill spots to create a section of a class.
Flexible.
Please push back if.
No, and seed all is actually also informally encouraging some school districts to consider that, they're not discouraging us from doing that. They're saying you should probably look into this because we can't necessarily fulfill all your needs.
They are, uh, the superintendent uh did announce her retirement and there's a new one coming in, there is there is some unrest there at the moment that would play in, I think, to. This whole formula as well.
Me like we have no choices.
Possibly.
And then fi- finally, uh, recommendations, uh, after operations have been adjusted to achieve post referendum programming and staffing goals. Uh, the district should strive to balance operating expenditure growth rates to operating revenue growth rates with the objective of maintaining balanced budgets in perpetuity. The district should make capital investment decisions within the long term financial projections. Fund balance reserves are available to address a level of capital projects beyond the use of remaining bond proceeds. So um, we built in twenty four million um, after this year. Well, four million dollars a year, let's put it that way. Uh, I know that there's other projects Chris has shared with me that that the district would consider. Um, and the district does have the ability, if it desires, to to tap into fund balance reserves at this point in time. To some capacity and that's something that you would look at, how will this impact our long term projections, how would this impact our long term projections? So that's kind of the way um, I think, I think. I think the conversations that are being had today are really good conversations because. The district's in good financial shape, but you never want to get to where you were before. So you want to continue on focusing on return on investment, is there a better way, more effective way to deliver? Just and I'm not saying that you would, but in general. Just because the uh, a district's in healthy financial condition doesn't mean they could continue to say, well, you know what, we could save money by doing this. And still help the kids or or and conversely. You've put yourself in a situation and the taxpayer supported the situation that if your academic people uh recommend a program that uh could help the students. You have the opportunity, you you have the resources to do that if it makes sense. So you're in a position that you could say yes to things that could help the kids and at the same time, always strive not to spend any dollar that has no value in terms of return on investment.
That goes back to a point we've talked about before where when we create positions. They shouldn't, we should always be evaluating their effectiveness to either adjust or. I'll just leave it at that, but.
Agree.
Yeah.
Agree.
I mean, every dollar spent, it matters now, not. I always worry about the places that like, which could be us. We continue on a spending spree and then we're starting to cut, whereas if we start out with the mindset right now of. Solid fiscal, yeah, and every dollar we save now means many dollars down the line, so. As long as we live within our means, as we've talked about numerous times.
And your assumption was.
I'll be okay.
An additional four full time equivalent staff next year and then no additional.
That's that's the that's the number that's built in the projection.
That's what you were using for this, okay.
And and then to your point, so I'm making, so 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 to me, especially in your situation. Recommendations to spend money shouldn't be necessarily a yes or no decision, it should be how does this impact student learning? And 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 you're in the position that if 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 there's things that you could bring in that could help the students, you could do that. You 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 you're in a financial position to do that. And again, at the same time, if you're hiring something that has no value, then you don't do it. But 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 again, it shouldn't just be a yes or no on the dollars, how does it impact student learning? That's that's to me, that's a good board question.
So that's part of what I was getting at about the the. Fund balance, whatever the reserves was. I understand how it works in terms of having a long runway to see what's coming and make decisions about the future, but. As we're making decisions, especially that involve like new hiring where you're making a commitment for a long time. That would affect. How. Your reserves would accrue or how long they would last or that, what's kind of a guideline about? Like it looks like at the high point, we get to like ten months of reserves. Is that a goal that's desirable, you know what I mean, what's a guideline?
So yeah, so so we're projecting around ten months worth of reserves at the end of this. So so then, so so that money has, could have any value, you you could use that to invest more into the facilities. You 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 could, you know, uh, you have the option to do that. You could um, save the money and 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 strive on, you know, we're we're looking not only for the kids that are here now, but their little brothers and sisters and. Future, you know, future families that move into the community and we want to make sure we're always there. The the way that your fund balances is that, you know, once you cross that number, which you did last time, you weren't broke, you were still able to pay the teachers. And it gave you time to methodically reduce expenditures, it gave you time to 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 work to get a successful passage of a referendum. So it gave you the time to solve your financial problem without impacting your students. That's always the objective. But but um. You could you again, the the more ability you have to balance budgets, the more comfortable you should feel being able to go down, bring your fund balances down. So I so you're 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 in summary, you're you're in good financial shape and.
We agree, we agree, as long as we make wise decisions.
And continue to make wise decisions.
Being seventy five years old, I'm glad we have another twenty five years.
Yes, for your hundredth birthday.
All about you.
You'll be knocking on doors for a referendum.
We already did that, we're not doing it again, that's what I got to say, so.
This is rude, not doing that again.
Can I ask a couple clarification questions on the the numbers?
Sure.
I don't remember um. Offhand, so I'm asking for myself, but also for the group. What the conversations were and the assumptions around replacing retiring employees?
So so the the assumption is that all all retired employees will be replaced. The teachers will be placed at a lower amount, the non teachers will be placed at at amounts similar to what the the outgoing pay is.
But an an a net zero.
Net zero, yes.
FTEs.
Correct. And again, the four that I'm using in the assumption doesn't mean that you're locked into four, doesn't mean that you have to go up to four, it's just it's just it's just an assumption that's built in. Based on some preliminary conversations, but you know, how it ends up, I don't know. But but again, that's where next year, you know, things things will look a little bit different, hopefully towards the positive.
The other, I appreciate that, the other question I had that I don't remember where we landed um was. Part of the discussion around FTEs and staffing last year when we did this and also this round was. Our security staff are replacing a purchased service. And could you just refresh me on how you approached that with? you just refresh me on how you approached that with the projections?
So, so with the security, so salaries went up, but purchase, was it $400,000? I don't remember the number, but I think maybe $400,000, your purchase services, so, so bolstered, so, so, that, that's a good point, I mean, there's sometimes, there's a, that, that would be kind of like if you went to the, going back to specialized tuition, if, if, if it ended up going in that direction where you're bringing more students in, your salary expenses will go up significantly, but your tuition costs will go down, and in aggregate, you know, they would wash out, or, or save money.
Do you remember offhand if the, if the exchange of the purchase service with bringing in additional security wasn't part of those four FTEs?
It's not including those four FTEs. Those are non-security positions.
Bring in house, it was significantly, not significantly, but it was more expensive.
It was.
So, yeah, per person, so that might be just something, but seems well worth it.
We had reliability issues though before that, it seems to me.
Any other questions?
This was very helpful.
Very, thank you.
Great information, appreciate it, Mr. Grossi.
I appreciate you.
Appreciate you answering our questions.
Can I ask one more question?
Anytime.
What would be the, like, how would you recommend a board member go through the report? You gave us kind of an overview.
Yeah, I think, I think, to me, again, when that report was put together, the lens was what are, what's information that boards, that I think boards would find interesting, give them a better understanding of the overall picture of the district, what, whether you're new or old, there might be information, you know, there's, there's a lot of school, school boards I work with, you know, what value it is, whatever, but you, you don't know who your top taxpayers are, or your collection percentages, seeing how they, how those are changing, yours are, are high and, and stable, but if they start trending down, you know, as, as we update this every year, and all of a sudden you go from 99% to 96%, hey, what's going on here? So, so it, it just gives you a good flavor, if you have any questions, it shows how you fit into the evidence-based funding formula, and, and how that's calculated, which is a real boring section, but if you, but if you have it, it is.
Did you highlight the boring section?
Pardon me?
Did you highlight the boring?
Yes, I did. And, and, and so, if you have any questions, or, or if there's additional information you'd like to see, I'm always looking to improve, no, I, I'm always looking to improve that report.
I'd, I'd say the one thing that if you could add going forward, is the questions that we got asked a lot on, is a rough projection of how long we're going to last, we know we're doing really good in there to 2029, I'm sure, what I'm going to say, we all feel that way, when we knocked on doors, if we said to the public, it's going to last 12 years, every comment was, make it last 15, make it last 20, so if every time, and I know the further you reach out, the tougher it is to do, but just a rough estimate.
Looking at us, like, that's your job, right? So, I get that.
Seriously, put it writing, what I, what I want to say, what that number is?
Yeah.
I'll do it.
I'm not saying you have to do that, but you're going to get asked, you're going to get asked it every time.
But, but it is honestly, it, it's a, um.
It's a dart throw.
It, it, it's a dart throw, because you don't know what expenditure growth is going to be.
It's a dart throw, but we had to answer it still.
Yeah.
Of course, when you're going to a referendum, you know, so, so I've worked with school districts during the referendum process, informational kind of stuff, and those questions, and the way I would answer that is that, if, again, if you keep salary growth equal to revenue growth, and then, and then you start looking at 1% gaps, you know, if, if our expenditures go 1% higher than revenues, it'll last 27 years, if it grows 2% higher, it'll last 23 years. Because some of the, some of the, not all expenditure growth for sure, but some of the expenditure growth, you control.
Yeah.
What really, I think what really has been heavy on me is, I understand there's been inflation, but the rate at which salaries and recruitment are costing every district, it sounds like, and just to try and catch up with the CPI at this point, how far we're going to be able to go, being able to do that, because I work in healthcare, I think it's worse, but it's just as bad almost in schools, and so, when you see what you're having to dish out in order to attract people just to work, and the cost associated with the turnover as well, just trying to keep those expenses down to the rate at which we are given every year, is, will not happen, I know that, and that's where I start getting nervous. When we talk about trying to keep them even, the cost of healthcare alone and the benefits, that's why I was asking about the benefits, and how much we pay 100% for the benefits, and then on top of that, with the salaries, and trying to keep people engaged here, working, bringing in special ed salaries, specialized salaries, and I'm not trying to be a doom and gloom, but it's not all just, you know, even Steven in my head going forward, because there, it's a very expensive dynamic.
Once you get past 29, it's going to start to drift out.
No, I know it will, I understand it will.
From 84 million, back down to 50 million, it's going to take more than five years.
But I'm saying, like, in the next four, trying to keep those expenses down and still run at, at the rate we want to run, quality-wise, and keeping the teachers, like, it's just, the expenses are high.
Yeah. So I'm going to phrase my question in a different way, I can appreciate the fact that you only want to go out so far, but if there's any way you could give us the tools to do our, our own projection, whether it's Ms. Green ourselves, and the reason I'm going to keep asking this, is we gave the public a long-range projection, and now if the public comes to us and says, what's our long-range projection, to say, I don't have one, is really uncomfortable, I think it's in this range right here, well, what did you guys forecast out? Yeah, we don't have one. Well, we voted to increase taxes bas- based on this, but now reality, you can't give us one. Yeah, we had one then, but now we're saying we don't have one anymore.
I, I mean, we say we had one, I mean, there was still a lot of caveats, nobody has a crystal ball.
Absolutely, I, I get that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, next year, we could run unreliable, go out 10 years, 15 years, obviously, you know, with, with, with very high-level assumptions, but you know, one of the numbers is how much fund balances are you going to use for beyond the 24 million in major capital?
Yeah.
You know, that, that's a big driver of this thing.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm, I'm very comfortable with a very uncomfortable long-term forecast, it's better than not having one.
That's fine. So, so next year, Danny, tell me how.
Does that make sense to other board members of what I'm asking for?
Especially, especially I think it came in the form of what you were saying you've done during referendums before, like, if expenditures exceed revenues by 2%, then this is what would happen.
I mean, there, there's, there's nothing in your future that says that you're going to have to go for referendum again, I mean, I, I mean, there's no such thing as never, but, 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 but the.
Gible future.
But the community should feel comfortable, that, that, based on the fact that the district has demonstrated fiscal responsibility, and the fact that your expenditure growth has been so low since 2017, based on the fact that you, your, your largest salary expenditure numbers are known for the next four years, because you entered into a long-term contract with your teachers, and, and based on the fact that we already know what, how CPI is going to affect your taxes for the next couple of years.
Projected added FTEs.
Right, that, 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 that the district's, you know, 10 years, easy, 15 years, probably easy, 20 years, you know, I, I don't want to give a number, but, but, but I mean, it's, it's going to be quite a while, it, it'll be a, you know, it, it should be the, another generation before you have to go to referendum again.
And maybe it'd be, maybe it'd be easier for everyone, even if there was just something in there saying, based on everything that's in here, we see no need for another referendum for at least another 15 to 20 years, and just leave it at that.
Hmm.
So then we're not forecasting a way out then, and just so we go, just so we can go back to our stakeholders and say, hey, here's the information that we have.
And then, you know, you want, you want to be careful when you say at least 15 years, that, that is not interpreted, okay, they're going to go for referendum again in 15 years.
Right.
So it's, it's such a hard question.
No, I, I know, I know.
I respect the question a ton, but it's such a hard thing, but, but, again, with that being said, I think that you, you, you could address your, the needs of your students, address your facilities, and have healthy fund balances for quite a while.
I agree, but I'll still keep pushing back, quite a while doesn't mean anything to the people that voted for their taxes to go out.
I know, that's why I used it.
And I'll be done, because we could do this all night long, and I don't want to do that.
We appreciate you, though, thank you for all.
Very much, appreciate everything you do, Mr. Grossi, this is awesome stuff.
No, thanks, anytime. Have a good evening.
Okay, next up, on your action items, we've got approval for a couple students of service trips.
We're ready for you, thank you for sitting.
Thank you for being so patient.
There you go. It was good for me to hear that. I'm Flavia Jorgensen, thank you for having me tonight, I have been on faculty here at Warren for 23 years, I have two adult children that graduated, who were Blue Devils, now grown and living their lives, I teach freshman world history, AP government, but I'm here as the advisor of the students of service at O'Plane, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, it's been a long day, I'm a little bit tired, so, I want to tell you a little bit about the stu- students of service, it's a student-led organization, and it's, we have about, we're pushing 100 members right now, just at the O'Plane campus, so I have the freshmen and the sophomores, and these are students that are very interested in civic engagement and volunteerism, so, they are younger, they don't drive, and it's often very hard for us to find volunteer service hours for them, we, we do pretty good, but it's difficult, because a lot of the organizations want the students to be 16 or older, and there's often difficulty for them arranging rides to and from their volunteer places. So, a few weeks back, Claire, who is the representative from EF Tours that works with Tim Van Lanningham, and I think you guys are familiar with him, he's come in front of the board multiple times, contacted me about EF Service Tours, so these are slightly different than the tours that you guys have traditionally approved, those are more of a cultural exchange, where they're going and looking at historical sites, and then having that cultural exchange. The difference with the two tours that I'm proposing are that they will be working with local nonprofits and non-governmental organizations and locals to help build up their communities through community-driven projects and meaning, meaningful, sustainable contributions, so they're going to be doing hands-on volunteer hours and service work with indigenous cultures if we go to Peru, when we go to Peru, hopefully, and what they'll do is, they'll be able to draw on their own problem-solving skills, critical thinking, to work side-by-side with these local communities to help sustain these projects, so collaborating together with them, and then, the hope is, the idea is, they'll come back from these exchanges and put those skills to work in their local communities here. There is a cultural exchange aspect of this trip as well, of both of these trips, they're just, that's, that's the key difference on the service learning trips versus the type of trips that the other students have gone on. So, I didn't bring the handouts, because I thought you all probably had a copy of the proposals in front of you that you could look at, I don't know if there are any questions you'd like to ask me, or?
So we've never done this before?
I have been, I haven't been a leader on the trip, but I have chaperoned on other trips, I went to the trip.
Purpose of volunteering?
No, not on one of the service trips, I have not done this before.
I know, but, Warren, have we ever?
No, sorry, I misunderstood the question.
Is this new territory for Warren?
This, this will be a new territory, but familiar territory, it's not that different with EF Tours, all the same services will be provided through EF Tours that they provide on every other trip, so the global protection plans, all the vetting that they do, everything is the same, the only thing that's going to be different will be the experience, so they're not just going to be tourists and having cultural exchanges, they're going to be actually doing service work, that's the key difference.
Great, I was impressed that you're planning two trips in one year, tell me about that.
So, the reason that I'm doing this is because these trips will cap out at 24 students, that's the maximum of students that can go on the service trips, and as I said, our organization is pretty large, there are 100 kids, so this provides them with opportunities to go, because I only advise freshmen and sophomores, I kind of have to plan those trip quickly, the trips quickly before they're off onto the other campus, because this will not be extended to the juniors and seniors, that's part of it, and even though it's in the same year technically, they're two different academic years, so if you approve the Peru trip, that will be for next year's academic year in the summer, so the timeframe that we're looking at is second week of July, so that would cover the students for the next academic year, and then, the Thailand trip will be for winter break of the following academic year.
All right. Will you guys be doing any kind of fundraising, what if there's a student who wants to be part of the trip, but their parents can only come up with half?
Right, so that's why we're planning it so far out, I was looking at the numbers for Tim's trip, so just to use as an example, the trip that they just took to Japan, they had 17 months to save for that, and it would be the same type of plan, same payment plan, yep, only we're going to be spreading ours for Peru over 14 months, and it comes out to only $20 more a month than Tim's trip, which they spread out over 17 months, so both of these trips are actually slightly less costly than the previous trips that you all have approved, we're hoping that giving them 14 and 20 months to save will make it manageable, one way that we are talking about making it equitable is, Students of Service does their own fundraising, we do have a little bit of money in our coffers, so we're looking to take a vote on the part of the student body to see if we can aid some of the tuition for one or two students. But to answer your question, it would be self-funded.
Questions for either one of these trips? Not? Yeah, thank you very much for doing this.
Yeah, I'm really excited about it, I'm always excited to be able to connect with the kids outside of the classroom, so I have chaperoned on a couple of trips with the AP Government students, some years ago, we went with EF Tours to DC and New York City, and it was just really cool to see some kids that are really quiet in your class and don't speak often, or, you know, their gifts are different than maybe the traditional thing you'd see in an academic setting, and, and the same thing was true when we did, I, I was lucky enough to go to the Australia-Fiji.
Wow.
New Zealand trip, but it, it is, it's a really cool way to connect with them, and you do see them grow a lot, and, and I think that a lot of these students will gain a lot of self-confidence, and maybe discover some skills that they didn't have before, yeah, I think it's very valuable.
Awesome.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I move to approve Students of Service Trip Proposal to Peru during summer 2025.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Pope. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, I move to approve the Students of Service Trip Proposal to Thailand during winter break 2025.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez, Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
I am so grateful to all of you, and I cannot wait to go and tell our membership that we have these two trips in the future planned, so, thank you guys, thank you for your work, too.
Have a great night, thanks, Dr. Daniel.
Mrs. Love, I'm, I'm sorry that I forgot to send you a copy of this, and it came to you late.
This is fine, everything was perfect, thank you.
I'm going to suggest maybe we consider jumping to item J, our last guest for the evening is here for item J.
Oh my gosh.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm all up.
So, item J is.
Next time, ask for A.
Yeah.
So, good evening, everybody, my name is Allison Ebers, I am with Gallagher, which is the broker consultant for the EBC, which is the cooperative that your district is part of for your benefits, so, part of the reason why I'm here today is really, I know part of the issue, obviously, when you were talking with your financials, was the cost of your benefits, so really wanting to address any of your questions that you have, also talking about some of the stuff that we've been meeting with, as far as with your insurance committee, as well as the discussions for future plans for, that are going to be offered that we're looking at. So, just high level, as far as the cooperative, I've actually worked with your district since you joined, or rejoined, I should say, in 2019, I've worked with your district specifically, we currently have, I'm just sorry, I'm waiting for the presentation, if you have it, sorry.
If I got it, it's coming up.
There you go, all right, so, a lot of what I'm doing initially is kind of going over the history of how your district has performed, comparing it overall to the EBC as well, so if there's any questions as I go through, just feel free to go ahead, so, oops, I think I. Oops, I think I just may have gone the wrong way. That was me, sorry. Doing anything. I think I'm going the wrong way, based on what I sent you. Maybe not. All right, we'll just go this way. So, okay, so as far as EBC districts, and I apologize. So you're one of 129 districts as of 7-1. So we are actually, the cooperative continues to grow year over year. We've actually added quite a few districts. We still, we span as far as Zion is probably our furthest north, and our furthest south, we go all the way to Decatur, Coal City. It's west of Sterling and Byron. So it's all over Chicago, and then also we're going into further into Illinois as well. So, there are, when we look at overall with the data, there are 10 districts in Lake County that are part of the cooperative. And really kind of trying to compare yourselves, even though I know some of them are elementary schools, looking at how you guys perform overall compared to those districts, as well as how many of those districts actually offer high deductible plans, which is one of the offerings that we're looking at, potentially doing as of 1-1. So, just a little bit of background. So there are 42 districts that offer high deductible health plans. This is still something with school districts that's kind of, you know, I think in the private world, we see pretty much everybody has a high deductible offering. A lot of our school districts are a little slower to do that. I feel like benefits are kind of the thing that everybody wants to hold on to. So your district is not alone. I'll show you the benchmark data as well. That shows just within Lake County how you compare. So there are 42 districts that offer high deductible health plans. Two districts actually offer them as their only PPO option. A lot of the history to that is just prior to joining the EBC, they had very bad claims experience, so their rates were just going really high. So that became the only option that they could offer for their PPO. There are five of those 10 that actually in Lake County offer high deductible options for their employees with various levels of enrollment, depending on their actual strategy of what they do for both the contributions as well as for their HSA contribution from the district. So as far as looking just overall, just once again, looking at Lake County, and I would say this is pretty much, this is pretty good, like, picture for all of our districts as well. So overall, when you compare yourself to the other districts in Lake County and the plans that they offer, you'll see there's a few that offer multiple PPO options. They are all around, and when you look at that average and that bottom line, as far as deductibles go, and this is not inclusive of the high deductible plans, they're averaging around 792 is the average single deductible, with a family deductible just under 2,000. As far as out-of-pocket, that's around 2,300 for single, and then just under, or just over like $5,600 for a family. So you can see where you fall as far as yours are bold and highlighted. You can see where the district actually compares overall. With your 750, you're kind of right in line. The 500 is on, I would say, on the lower end. But when I actually look at other districts as well, I would say you're pretty comparative because I have, as you can see, even looking just at, with, I think with Mundeline, they're at a $250 deductible. So they're actually much lower. So there are, still are districts that fall within that 250 or lower deductible. So you're not one of the only, you're probably, with that 500, you're really kind of close to being with a lot of our other districts, especially when we look at overall enrollment as well. Although a lot of these districts offer additional higher deductible options, their enrollment is still going to be with a lower option. Oops, went the wrong way. All right, so as far as the actual high deductible options in Lake County, comparing what we are looking at and exploring for 1-1 for your district compared to the others, you're roughly right about, I would say, as far as overall deductible, what's really offsetting everything right now is the Zion deductible, which is a reason why it looks really high overall. That 2,400 being the actual average is because Zion's 5,000 is really kind of, I would say, more of the abnormal when we look at our overall high deductible options. The 1,800 was allowing this district to, the IRS minimums are constantly changing. So that was allowing the offering to go through without having to change it year over year. It gives us hopefully another two years before a change has to be made. And it puts you right, kind of right in the middle of where other districts are. So as far as the other piece I wanted to share as well, because I think this paints a bigger picture too, between those that offer an HSA contribution and what we see typically as far as enrollment goes as well. So with, you can see of the five that offer, there's one exception that does not contribute to a HSA. You can see where roughly that enrollment falls. And then on the next slide, I actually, just so you can see percentage overall compared to their other plans, how many are actually enrolled in the high deductible options versus their other options that they have available. So you can still see overall, I would say, most are not in the high deductible plans. I think whenever I've done, I was, I implemented the one with North Chicago. They actually offer two options. For, I would say it was pretty successful getting the enrollment that we did into the high deductible plan for a first time going in, just because typically I feel like people are nervous to move to a high deductible option. So it was actually, I would say, a success overall. And we have seen continuous movement into the plan as well. And then I would say, CCSD 46, that is actually, they're coming in 7-1. So that is our newest option, or newest district, I should say, joining the cooperative. And also the highest amount of people that are actually in that plan. So as far as HSA contributions, which is always the topic, just because this is how we do typically see enrollment move and shift to a high deductible, is that there has to be that board contribution is how you would typically get more people to move over. And also, the contributions overall as far as between the different plans. If you can favor your high deductible option and make the contributions look better to that versus your other options as well, you typically see that shift that moves over to those plans. So as far as the average single contribution, this is looking more specifically at Lake County, not overall. We do have some districts as well that, I would say that we know of, that are, their contribution strategy will depend on whether or not they want to put all of their savings that they're seeing from one plan to the next into the HSA and fund it that way. We have other groups that just look at the deductible difference. North Chicago's approach was actually to take the difference in the deductible and put that into the HSA, which still gave the board, and the district still had some savings that they were able to realize. And then we've also seen others that actually contribute the whole entire single deductible into an HSA. I would not recommend that, just because the whole purpose is to make people really kind of shop and think about their services before they go. But that is one of the things that we do see as well. So the plan that we are looking at, this just gives you very high level and very tiny font to really make you work for it this late at night. And I do apologize, I realized as I was going through my slides that the formula did not carry down when I put it into the PowerPoint for the actual rate adjustment. The first tier is correct, but there is an adjustment for the, the rate should be lower for the employee plus spouse and children and family. So it shows overall, if you were to add that proposed plan design, what the savings would be for those, if there were people that moved over into that plan. So now this kind of goes more into the actual overall history with the EBC. If there's any questions, how your district has performed overall. So, just looking at your numbers, so you'll see with your most recent renewal, you came in as far as, so, and just to give a little bit more background as far as into the EBC and how it works. So you'll always see that EBC average, which is going to be what we consider the middle band of a banding formula. So even if your district is having the worst year ever, you have that protection with the cooperative that you will never be more than 5% above the EBC average, or 5% below the EBC average if you're having a really great year. So that really offers, that's one of the values of the EBC, is that even if you're having horrible year, horrible claims experience, you will always have a very, you'll have that protection within the actual cooperative. So when I look at overall, the last since your district came and joined the EBC, how your renewals have compared to the EBC average. You've been roughly about, on the PPO side, you've been about two bands above the EBC average. So you've performed essentially slightly worse than the overall EBC average. And then similarly as well, on the HMO as well, you typically have performed slightly, a little higher on the HMO than the EBC average. Looking at your most recent claims data that came through that was impacting the most recent renewal is just, you have, I believe, over 50,000, as far as, sorry. So claimants, individuals that are over $50,000, you have about 19, which for a district your size for the PPO is not bad. But it is just something to look at when you're actually, like, looking at overall as far as how you guys are performing. What's happening is that a lot of what's, your premium that have been collected for the district, you're actually paying out a lot more in claims. So you're leading to, when we look at that overall, your loss ratio for the district, it always has been, for the most part, especially on the HMO, has been higher than the 100%. So that means that for each dollar that's been spent or collected in premium, that it's been more spent out in claims. So this is just sharing a little bit, as far as a little bit of background into your overall population right now, as far as who's enrolled in the plan and the age group. Just because this kind of factors in, your average age is around 47 for your enrollees, which is a little bit on the higher end than what we see for some of our other districts. So this also has, to some degree, fortunately with age, does come sometimes a higher risk of cancers and other things that are driving costs up higher, hypertension, other issues as well, and complications. So, not to say that the younger population don't bring a lot of claims as well, because they bring babies, and babies are expensive. So, or pregnancies can be expensive. So it's, but it's hit or miss, but just trying to give a little bit of background as well that you can see that this is kind of also driving some of the costs that you're seeing as well. The one thing I, or more than one thing really, I wanted to talk to you as well is, you know, I give you kind of how your district has been performing claims-wise, but one of the things I really wanted to point out with your district is that I can say of all the districts that I work with, within the cooperative, that yours is one that definitely promotes a lot of the programs that are out there that are offered to EBC members and to those that are enrolled, that help to try and control cost. So Blue Cross has a program, Member Rewards. So essentially, members are, if they are shopping for services, so if they need an MRI or CAT scan, they are able to go out and shop either online or by calling Blue Cross. And if they go to a lower-cost provider, they are then given money back. There is a reward that comes back. So your district actually is one of those that I see that definitely promotes the benefits, and people actually use it. So they actually do pay attention. So I have groups that, like, may send out emails, no one really looks at the email. Your district has always been, ever since you came in, you've definitely been one that I will say that when I've presented in front of employees, they actually seem to know the program. Like, they, it's not like they're hearing it for the first time. So I'm not going to say everybody, but it is, I would say, it's of all the groups, I always hold one at your district to be like, these are the, these are who you should reach for. And strive to be like, especially, so Teladoc is a telemedicine provider as well that's available for the PPO and HMO members. It is not run through claims, so this is not impacting at all your, anything that's going on with your district. But the whole purpose of this is to take away anybody that could potentially go to urgent care or other situations. This allows them to speak to a doctor 24/7, and if they need prescriptions, they can get it that way. So we see as far as... No, it's free. Yeah. And this is, and this is not, this is not, because it's not running through the plan, it was not part of anything that the district was itself was paying for. It was actually, at this point, it was being paid for the fund, like, essentially the working cash or additional fund balance from the EBC. So it was, the whole purpose of driving down and not having a co-pay for the PPO and HMO was really to drive people to that service, because this is actually where we do see, those one of the programs where you can actually see quantifiable, like, savings from using this program. Because you see people, when they answer the question, where would you have gone for services, their options are typically urgent care, which would run the cost a lot higher than just the visit. So, and the consult visit as of 7-1 will be $53. So essentially, when you compare that consult to an actual urgent care visit, you're, even though the district isn't responsible for it, it's still very minimal.
Co-pay.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So your district with a 33% utilization, that's once again, like, an annualized utilization, that just shows how well it's actually been, like, received, and people are actually using it. I would say, like, I typically see around 7% for most of my groups. So to be that high, once again, is showing that your employees know the benefits, and they are taking advantage of them. And so, not included in here as well, but I did want to quickly talk on, because it does tie into this, is also your district's approach to wellness and your employees as well, participation with wellness. So the EBC does also have, like, a wellness incentive program, which allows, there's money that comes back to the committee, or they can determine how they want to use it. Since your district joined in 2019, so for the past few years, your district had always reached the maximum incentive earnings that they could possibly get each year. So, last year was roughly just under about $45,000 that came back to the district. So it's always been well-received. People are getting their screenings. So a lot of what you're seeing as far as overall claims are those prevent, those are like, those things that you just can't control. I think overall employees, from what I've seen, and the support that they get from, you know, the administration, from what I have seen as far as participation in this program, show that people are trying to take those steps to where they can control their costs, if they are trying to control their costs. So, any questions for me? Because that is everything.
That was very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for having me.
So our proposal today is for increase, the increase in rates for medical insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance. And then we've talked about this high deductible plan. And I think where we're landing as a team here is that probably the best rollout time for that would be a January start date. Allison, maybe you could talk to us just briefly about why does it make more sense to start in January as opposed to July?
Sure. So, there's a couple of reasons. So where we see success, so yes, you could do it at the same time as your open enrollment. It may go out nicely. But where I've had pushback, and most employees have asked the question, is because their deductibles will restart as of 1-1. So those that have already met their deductible potentially on the plan that they're on, they don't want to make the switch. So, starting at 1-1, everybody essentially is starting fresh. Also, your district offers an FSA, a flexible spending account, which would make anybody that's enrolled in that, they would not be eligible for HSA to either contribute themselves, or if there was a board contribution, they wouldn't be eligible to receive it until the new year. So putting it out and doing a special open enrollment just for this really allows us to highlight the benefit as well, gives us the time to, like, really do a targeted approach just for the medical benefit, and really gives you that time to educate, so.
Any other questions? Did we have a chance this year to go look at any other providers or co-ops or any other options? Or are we just going with the same old, same old?
And I can quickly, I can talk to that as well. So, as far as going, so with your district, so EB, sorry, Gallagher also has NIHIP as well, which I know before your district joined the cooperative was one of the ones that they explored before they joined EBC. So, your rates for their cooperative specifically would pretty much be the same. It's still self-funded, so you're pretty much going to have the exact same rates. We did look at other options as well, which I still have to share back, but like, they were coming in pretty much at the same. Where I would always hesitate as far as making any, especially seeing how your claims and how you've been performing year over year most recently, where I would always draw caution as far as making any jump to another carrier or to go fully insured on your own is because you at times, and though it didn't come through this way, but at times, they can throw a nicer rate at you initially for the first year, and then the next year you get hit. So it's my, I always caution, I know it's, the renewal rates have come in, you know, when we look at overall what you've been seeing for the last few years, have been on the higher end. This is, we're seeing it across, obviously you can see the EBC average as well. But I would just caution ever making that switch right away, just based on how you guys have been, your experience has been so far.
I understand that, and I can appreciate that, but I guess going forward, I'd still like to see some other options.
Yep.
I mean, it could end up being, this is the best, but we don't know.
And I can, I can give those back to you.
We just spend a lot of time talking about financial, you know, fiscal responsibility.
Yeah.
And we have no comparables.
Kev, we'll get those, we'll get those to you guys.
Anything else from the board?
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you, Allison. I appreciate you waiting around so long.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I move to approve the medical, dental, vision, and life insurance premiums with education. I move to approve the medical, dental, vision and life insurance premiums with Educational Benefits Cooperative for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mrs. Pope.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Squires.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Demonte.
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
abstain.
I have six yes, one abstention. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Let's see, skipping around back up to C, number C. It's just, I don't know if we need to have much of a conversation, this is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, we talked about this in Finance Committee.
Any questions? If not, I move to approve the student fees for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Anderson. Mrs. Squires.
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Pope.
Yes.
Mr. Demonte.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thanks. Next up are some changes to the Student Parent Handbook.
I don't have anything specific. We don't have major changes from the last discussion about this, although we assume that there'll be some state policy changes over the summer that might need some updates.
Questions? If not, I move to approve the changes in the twenty-four, twenty-five Student Parent Handbook.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Carlson. Mrs. Martinez.
Yes.
Mrs. Squires.
Yes.
Mrs. Pope.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Demonte.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Next up are some new multilingual courses and revisions to the curriculum guide.
Just briefly, if you have questions, Chris can answer these, but generally what we're recognizing is as our EL population increases, it's better to assign them based on their reading level as opposed to whether or not they are ninth grader, tenth grader, eleventh grader, twelfth grader.
Very good change.
Appreciate it.
Anything else? If not, I move to approve the new and updated multilingual English courses for the revised twenty-four, twenty-five curriculum guide as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mr. Demonte.
Yes.
Mrs. Squires.
Yes.
Mrs. Pope.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Next up is an approval to the Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Staffing Plan.
See, I think we're on F.
We're on F. I'm just wishing, I'm wishing, that's all.
That's soup.
Yeah. Approval for the Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Title-One School Year Plan Waiver Application.
We've done this annually, but if people want us to talk through it, we can. Title is federal funds that we receive based on our poverty rate. We have to give them a plan on an annual basis on how we're going to use those dollars.
Is it new that we're having a school-wide plan, or is that what we've been doing for a while?
A school-wide plan has been newer for us recently. We have to apply for that, more in that twenty to forty percent threshold, I think, where we have to apply, but we did hit that twenty percent threshold at this point.
Yeah, so before I can file the waiver application with the state, we have to, the board has to approve a school-wide plan. And then I will turn around and I will file, like we retain the school-wide plan locally, but we do have to file an application for a waiver with the state and then they review that and then they tell us whether or not they approve us for a school-wide plan. So if they don't approve us for a school-wide plan, then that means we're targeted, so that means we can only utilize those funds to serve academically at-risk students and EL students.
I think what you, what you were asking, correct me if I'm wrong, have we ever had a school-wide plan approved?
We have, yes. We've done that, I believe this is the third year we've been school-wide. And we've got to do a waiver every time.
If not, I move to approve the Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Title-One School-Wide Plan and Waiver Application.
Second.
Roll call.
Martinez.
Martinez.
Okay. Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mrs. Pope.
Yes.
Mr. Demonte.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Squires.
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Now we're on to the Twenty-Five Staffing Plan.
Yeah, briefly, the proposal for the staffing plan is a net increase of ten positions. Eight of these are security positions as we do our second phase of bringing security in-house, that's the most of the positions. There is a position here for a licensed teacher, an additional licensed teacher, to help us provide some more EL services and better address things that came out with the EL, state EL audit a year and a half ago. We also have an administrative position on the list here to support career pathways. We had talked about a handful of other possibilities, but the team did a really good job sharpening the pencil over the last month, month and a half, and we're really excited about the academic intervention offerings that we can increase and provide next year with current staffing, just with the decrease in student enrollment.
Perfect.
Could we talk a little bit about, I'm sorry, I know it's late.
No.
Could we talk a little bit about the pathway position?
Sure can.
Okay. So I'm still trying to figure out in my head if this is a nice-to-have or a needed position. It was never a referendum position that was discussed. I know some of these aren't either, but a lot of these are mandated through audits we've done, and I say mandated, but necessary, I'll deem them, right? And I know that the audit, the, excuse me, the pathways, eventually we run into mandates with that also, but not this year, not next year, correct? And I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out if it's a good time to do this, is it something we can hold off on while we're looking at the special ed slash general ed audit? Because there's going to be a lot of moving parts with that, and there's a lot of work to be done. And I just get concerned with, you know, the things that we know we have to do and the things that we would like to do. I mean, we could like to do a lot of things, and I'm trying to figure out where on that continuum this position is. I know this, I've seen the benefits of the securities and stuff like that, and I think we can all see, even in our reports, the amount of incidents are changing. But with this, I think, you know, I look at, we have so many people going to tech campus, we have more kids going from our school than any other school. I'm not suggesting the pathways are not necessary to develop, but is it something we need to do right now? Or do we have bigger priorities with our dollars and our time and our efforts that our school needs to be spending with this special ed, or we can call it gen ed audit? So I'm just going to toss that out there because I just, I'm concerned about moving forward with this right this second, if it's not something we really, we need to prioritize as much as other things. And I defer to other people to...
No, I have the same concerns, but I don't feel like this is going to address the things that came up in the special ed audit, which I feel like ought to be prioritized over that. And that we've been talking about students who are failing multiple classes, that it doesn't look like this would address the needs of those.
If I could respond briefly, I've been around a long time, I don't want to. Most other schools, unless I'm misinformed, Lake County do this, number one. Number two, it's a very small amount of money and we've just been told we have twenty-five years. Number three, I prioritize, I won't say I prioritize, but I think one of the gaps in the outlook of this board, special education is wonderful, God love it, I have a grandson who's on the spectrum, I understand its need, but I'm looking at the D-plus to B-minus students, the ones who have no other resource. And everybody, all generalizations are false, including this one, as they say, but everybody, to a certain degree, needs assistance with job training and what they're going to go do with their career, particularly a high school kid. I think this is something we should do. I have a certain amount of sympathy with, we don't need to do it right now. I would suspect that there are many things we don't need to do right now that we're going to do. But so I, again, I know I don't have the votes here, but I would like, I would ask the board to consider doing this whenever possible, whenever Danny feels we have the resources necessary to do it. Lastly, I have experience developing programs, and I would make it a personal goal to put together a scholarship job training, a variety of programs, and I'm going to come to you when we're ready with not only concrete proposals, but concrete funding proposals, possibly partially from outside. End of sermon.
What do you think, Danny? What does your vision say?
Yeah, so I think our team is really excited to be able to offer additional career training and connections. I would say training and connections probably. I think it is a big project. I think there is probably some alignment of the discussion around graduation credit requirements with this type of work. We have an opening here with our graduation requirements that, because our graduation requirements are probably low, we know that, and they're probably the lowest in the county, I'm guessing, close to if not. And so we've got some opportunity there to, when we maybe normalize our graduation requirements within eight-period day, be considering doing that differently than we've done in the past. So there's a couple...
Setting higher standard.
We can set a higher standard and we can decide what the standard is, and the standard doesn't have to be the typical high school experience. So I think that Beth is right, that statutorily, we, this isn't the need-to-have this year. There is probably some level of, like, we're seeing this happening in school districts all around us, and we are the larger school district in the county, and not having that is tough, I think, for us to process. And so there's some desire to make sure that we're offering that same level of service to students.
Can you clarify what you mean by it's hard to process?
Yeah, I think, so when we're talking about we want Warren, we want to provide Warren kids with the best high school experience and the high schools around us are able to offer a level of service that we're not, that's just, the team would like to be able to do that, yeah.
Well, may I respond to that, though? I mean, the last time I ever checked, and this may have changed, but when we passed the referendum, we were only the second-best funded per student in the Lake County comparable. And so there, we may be bigger, but we're, I mean, regardless of the twenty-five years we think we may have today, we're not Lake Forest, you know, we're not, we're not the most funded per student. And so I understand what you're saying, I just, just in keeping in mind, you know, we're not, we're not the most funded per pupil either. And so it may be hard to swallow that we don't have a certain program right this minute. I'm not suggesting, just to clarify, I'm not suggesting we don't ever do this, I'm just trying to prioritize our dollars that are we're spending today versus, you know, whatever. But I don't mean to interrupt you, but...
No.
Our size is one thing, but our level of our revenues per student are another. And so I'm just trying to be cognizant of what we're spending when and in what priority, that's all.
I would suggest as you go down the road, if we're able to save money on special education, we apply it to this.
I agree with a hundred percent what you're saying, Beth. Every new position, we should challenge and make sure we're getting some sort of benefit out of that that we need today, tomorrow, or whenever. My question on this position is, how is this similar or dissimilar to, I think we have like a tech campus coordinator and someone's other positions? If this person's doing more to help out, one of my concerns has always been, we do a great job of trying to make sure everybody graduates, and we do a great job of all these things we can promote for all these people going to a university or a college. My concern is, I don't think we do as much as we could be doing for the kids who graduate and aren't going to college. I feel like there's a gap there. I don't know how many of our kids graduate that don't go to college, but I think we should be doing more to prepare them for life after Warren, instead of just saying, here's your, here's your diploma.
We send most kids out of any other school district to the tech campus.
There's other, but there's other avenues out there too. If this person can help out with a whole general platform...
Yeah, I understand. I agree.
Would this position address what Paul is talking about?
So most school districts address this in a general, like any student that wants to have a more focused career preparatory experience in high school can do that. And so they will, most high schools will create career pathways that are equally useful for the student that wants to work in an ambulance and the student that wants to be a brain surgeon.
What if they just want to be a mechanic?
Yeah, they can be a mechanic or...
From the low, from the non-college to the college.
Yeah, but some of the pathways are leading you to college so that you can do whatever career.
Yeah, the idea is you create pathways that are stackable experiences, so I can jump off of the stack at any time. I can jump off right after high school, because I've got some type of certification.
CNA certificate.
CNA certificate. Or I can use that to keep going to school, or what you're probably going to see more of in the next fifteen years is, they, more and more students are going, are working full-time and going to school part-time, and so they are using those stackable credentials to pay for the way up the ladder. I think if the board wanted to approach that differently, that would definitely end up being appropriate strategic conversation around, hey, if we're going to do something like this, how do we target it appropriately? We haven't done that work on our end, but that's something that we could, could go back and do if that's something...
I think it'd be nice to see it through before we approve it, like to see how it would be engaged, kind of, you know, retro to what Tony always suggests is, let's measure it, you know, after, let's see what it looks like flushed out a little bit more, I guess. And again, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just trying to say, we don't know what we're spending going forward, it's going to take a lot of time and effort from the team here. Like, how much do we want a heavy lift at the same time?
General, we got a very rosy projection today, and I would caution this board against, I'm looking for a word other than minutia, this is a very, very small amount of money to address a large need. And, you know, I hate to see us establish a precedent of every little thing like that, we're going to go, don't do it, for what it's worth.
But I don't think we've established that this is a large need right now. And I think part of what we also heard from Mr. Gross is we need to be careful early on to save money to make sure it lasts longer.
Could we just table the discussion until Danny flushes out some information for us?
It's a great idea.
Yeah, so it sounds like one thing we want to talk more about is what it would look like if we're targeting different needs? Maybe tell me, tell me what types of things that I could better flesh out.
So as a parent who's got a senior graduating and can't read all of the emails I get about career preparation, whether it's college or not, and we get a lot, I don't know, there's three parents here of students, I mean, I can't open my emails fast enough. And so there's a lot that goes on here, and it would be nice to have a full-bodied assessment of what we do for career planning and where this position would fit in, you know, as a pathway coordination, but in coordination with all the other services we're providing. We have a tech campus person, I believe, right?
Right.
We have, we have career counselors, we have whatever, like, how does this all fit together? What does it look like? Would it be retooled? Would, would those, I'm not saying those positions, but I mean, where does it all fit? What is the need? What does it fill? That's my thought around this, because as a parent, I'm like inundated with more information than I can get. My son happens to be going to college, but believe me, I got emails that aren't about college, about career preparation, so...
Let me make this easy, what you're saying is fine with me, but let's look at the need, but just don't forget about this, that's all I ask.
No one's forgetting about it.
Yeah, no one's saying we should forget about it, we just want more details on it.
Okay.
So how, how does this position fit within the already provided services?
All right, what's different about this position that's not already being offered?
And what needs would it fill? Like, what, how would it function? I get the gist, but more specifically, I guess.
I'd also be interested to know how this position would fit in, like who else that's already here in administration would be working with this position?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And how does that overlap with the other, like, kind of new projects, like the special Like the special education audit or the new interventions that I know are using current staff, which is great. But it's going to involve somebody managing it and making sure it's effective.
There was something else we discussed, just to throw it out there, but we, we know we have retirees. We know we have lowering, lowering class sizes and stuff like that. I mean, within a year, does that open an opportunity? I don't want to say retrofitting, but, you know, is there someone going to be available to do this instead of bringing on Mr. Anderson?
I'm just breathing.
Oh, you can breathe.
I think there's a lot that's not understood about what this program really is, so.
This would fall under Chris?
Go right ahead.
This would fall under Chris?
This would fall under Chris, yeah.
So sorry.
He says one word and he finally gets cut off.
I mean, I, I think that if Chris is comfortable, maybe he could give us a, a brief overview of what the position that he's going to lead is like.
And he doesn't have to do that tonight, maybe that's, I mean, you can, I'm just saying.
Let's wait, so we can figure out some of the other thing we're talking about and have it more thorough.
I think one thing with, that if you, just I want to say this. This is, this position, from what I understood, was really about creating the career pathways programs at Warren, so they create the classes that stack together. It's not, I don't believe that it's, the original intent was for that person to be actually corralling students. This is going to build this program that we currently don't have. Is that right, basically?
That's the majority of it. There is a part, like, so right now, one of our deans does, serves as our tech campus liaison, and he and I kind of share some of that responsibility. And it would kind of bring all of that under one administrator to, to kind of unify that program. But the bulk of the work is meant to build out career pathways, career opportunities for here at Warren, yes.
All kinds of stuff like that.
Is that a, thank you, short-term need or a long-term need? It starts to sound like that. That's another problem.
It's not, it's a long-term need for us, so I think, I'm kind of listening to what the, the questions are. I think it would be good just to maybe like put together or some, gather some of the information, put a package out so we can have a a better conversation about that, coming up in the next meeting or two. I'm happy to get answers for you guys and talk through exactly kind of what our vision is for that and why that's, why we feel that's a need for us.
Because I think there was also, if I'm, and if I'm mistaken, some discussion about liaison work and internship work outside of the school and things like that. Is that something, you know, so maybe flushing this out would be a little bit more helpful too, in the scope of it.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, when you sound like maybe there's, oh, were you going to say something again?
No.
Never mind. I'm done.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it's important for us to maybe answer the questions the board's had and draw a much clearer picture of what the position is and what we, what value we think it could bring.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Danny, should we table the whole motion, or do you want me to amend it just to take out that one position?
If, if there are, if it's just the administrative position, then it would be helpful if we could get approval on the licensed teacher and the security positions, so we could post and start the hiring process for those.
Is anybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to move to approve the fiscal 25, fiscal year 25 staffing plan as presented without the administrative position to support career pathways.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
We have six yes and one no. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Next up, we're looking for approval on the contracts and composition for the administrators and some more people. Do we need any more conversation on this? I move to approve contracts and compensation for the 24-25 school year for administration, non-union IMRF, and transportation employees.
Second.
Okay, go ahead. Martinez.
Second by Martinez.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mr. Carlson?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Demonte? Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Next up is an approval of MOU between the Board of Education and the Teachers Union. Is there any questions or comments on this? I love the enthusiasm though.
Making up ground.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Warren Township High School and Board of Education and the Warren Township High School Federation of Teachers for the recruitment and retention efforts for certain hard-to-fill positions for the 24-25 school year as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Pope. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thanks. Next up is approval to expend funds for the 24-25 school year. It's kind of procedural. We're just spending no more than 25 percent until the budget is finalized. Any questions?
No.
If not, I move to approve expending no more than 25 percent of the tentative budgeted expenditures for the 24-25 school year as necessary to operate the district before a final budget is approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope? Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Last item is approval of the board agreements and next steps. Any questions or further discussion? If not, I move to approve the board agreements and next steps as presented.
Second.
Second by Pope. Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Pope. Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thanks. Before I adjourn the meeting, I just want to thank Dr. Weisman for pointing out all the live arts presentations out in the hallway down there. There are some awesome things out there. My question is, how do we bid on some of these? There's a couple of those I would love to purchase.
Paul and I are in a bidding war.
I know. There's like, one of them I like, I want, so.
If you take, if you really want something, take a picture of it and I'll follow up with the arts, the arts teachers.
There's nothing else?
No, I don't mean take a picture. Take a, send it to, send me a picture so I know which one you're interested in, then I'll talk to the art teachers.
If there's nothing else, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second by Martinez.
I'm having a bad day.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night. Appreciate the long meeting, great conversations and discussions.
Are we off?